My clock says 10:00 AM. I call the meeting order. Please stand and put me in the pledge.
Congratulations to the United States of America and to the Republic for which we dance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Right in your packets is the consent agenda with the minutes from last week.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Shay, second by Jorgensen, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. First on the agenda, Brenda Mainwaring, President and CEO Iowa West Foundation, update and discussion of grant awards cycle two and to present the report to the community.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm going to take a little bit more time than I usually do because I have two things I want to talk to you about today. First, and you should have the media alert in your packet, our announcement of the grants that were awarded by the Iowa West Board last week at their cycle three grant meeting. Two focus areas, again, about $1 million for the second year to various workforce development. We made the shift a couple of years ago to try to move away from individual focused scholarships to try to make sure we're addressing the needs of more students and particularly being attentive to rural and urban students don't have the same needs. And so we've been working with all of the school districts in Potawatomi County to make sure that they can develop workforce, workforce training programs that meet their individual needs. Part of that is also getting students ready to go to college if that's what they want. But when a student is in high school and surrounded by all the supports and they achieve something like getting a certificate or getting a CNA, that gives them the confidence to go on and do something more later in their future. So we're really happy with how that's shaping up. The other thing we're doing is a focus on food insecurity. Unfortunately, we have quite a lot of it. We are making three grants, two in the rural areas to Food Bank for the Heartland and Food Bank of Iowa to have mobile food pantries and backpack programs for kids, especially over the summertime when they don't have food over the weekends. And then we're together, which will be moving into his new pantry here in Council Bluffs in September. The rest of them you can see on there. There's a lot of our, what we refer to as enrichment grants, the opera, the gardens, Kiwi Luminaram. We are very focused on making sure that those programs are available to all of the students through Potawatomi County. And that's, we reward that behavior when the, when those Omaha-based organizations make a point reaching out to southwest Iowa. So that's what I really have to say about the grants. Any questions?
Just, I got one, just think I answered, but Brenda, the nature conservancy of Iowa, is that land down south here?
It's just directly south of Bunkie, attached. It's on the other side, but contiguous to Green Hills.
Right.
Kind of like management, yeah.
Was there anything particular there we got to do with that?
They want to make it available as they have with the rest of it. They have an arrangement with the DNR where they would make it publicly available. I don't know the details on it yet. The, the purchase has not been finalized to this knowledge.
Okay. Thank you.
I think I said this before, but I appreciate Iowa West recognizing that not every young person is, is fit for college, just put it that way, or is, is, is take a different path, career path, and certainly appreciate your efforts, you guys' efforts on that.
I'm not sure I was fit for college at 18. I went anyway.
I wouldn't have been either. I did a service enlistment, right, before I got into college. Those two years make a difference.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I wouldn't have.
Good, thank you. Okay, the other thing I want to do, if we can get the presentation pulled up, we haven't done this as a matter of practice, but I think we're going to try to start doing this, where we're going to report out to the community. Part of what we wanted to do is really engage more. So I showed this to the city council last night and obviously to you today. We'll make a few adjustments and then we're penciling in September 18th for a report out to the community and sort of an engagement conversation about how we're doing on housing. So I'm going to run through this with you. We're going to go pretty fast. So on the first one, our whole purpose is to serve communities. That's why we exist. And when, when I got here in 2021, we hired a firm to, to survey anonymously how we were doing, and they told us what all of you already knew, which is we were somewhat disconnected from the communities that we serve. So that made us say, okay, well, what are we going to do about that? How can we reconnect? How do we engage the community in setting our funding priorities? How do we apply those priorities to a new strategic vision? How are we going to then change our processes so that people feel like they have a better understanding of what we're doing by being more transparent? And then not lastly, this is a great place to live. How can we make everybody more aware of that by telling the stories of all of those organizations that we're helping? So the first thing we did was that, how do we engage the community? And I know several of you participated in what we referred to as Imagine Hour in 2022. We made, we took seven meetings. We took them throughout the county and high school and college and coffee shop in Oakland and said, what is it you love about your community and what can we do to be, to do, to do better? We really viewed that as a way to understand what it is that the community set as their priorities. So you may remember this, we got a lot of responses. We still have all those post-it notes. We still have all those cards and we actually refer back to them periodically to say, are we doing what we said we would do, which we'll talk about more here. These are the cards that we got, you know, what can we do? What do we have to have? What would make it better? And we got all sorts of answers. We got thousands of responses. But we also, some of them that we, we asked afterwards, what did you think about that experience? And it was really great to see, like up in the upper left-hand corner, seeing so many people coming together with such a sense of pride, hope and excitement. That's what we want, to keep going. We want to make sure people feel that way every day about their community. So we got a ton of answers, literally thousands of answers. And we don't have time or frankly, resources to do all of them. So we had to really look at what are the top priorities. And three very clear must haves came out. Housing for everybody, education that has a purpose, and recreation for well-being. Okay, so we went out, we asked, what do you want to do? Now we had to figure out, how are we going to apply that to orient the grants that we do towards those interests that the community has? The board took about a year doing a strategic visioning exercise to say, are we focused on the right thing? We didn't change it very much, but we changed it a little bit to say, we want to build communities where families love to live and businesses thrive, not about bringing new people in or bringing new businesses in, although of course we want to do that, but making this a great place for people who live here. So that resulted in several outcomes that we think define great communities. Belonging, hometown pride, community engagement, financial stability, not just do you have a roof over your head, but do you have your basic needs met and do you have a housing stability and freedom from worry? Opportunity on ramps to personal achievements, not what I think is personal achievement, but what an individual sees as their access to personal achievement through a level playing field. And finally, well-being as thriving, not just surviving, pursuing passions, increasing a general level of happiness. So we developed those, we took them back out to the community and said, you're close, not quite there. We made some tweaks and we have now been implementing these. That made it, that took us from a system where we were, we would essentially say, okay, is your grant for education, is it for placemaking? Is it for, one of the things that we defined as a bucket? And we said, well, the work that you're doing helped create these outcomes that make us a better community. So we shifted it a little. It hasn't changed our grantees a lot, but it has changed how we communicate with our grantees about what we want them to be producing. Okay, so we went out, we asked, we changed our strategic vision. So how are we going to change our processes in order to make sure that we're doing better about maintaining that transparency with the community? We want to collaborate. I hope that if you hear anything from the community about what Iowa West is doing now, it's collaboration, that we are working with others. We want to make sure our partners are empowered so they can make it, this a successful community. We want to foster a leadership that, that is reflective of all of us. And we want to support those people-focused outcomes, not just building things, but creating a better environment for the people who live here. Okay, so now we got three things done. The next thing we have to do is show the community, tell the community what it is that is, that we have going on. So Mitch, we have to click and click again. There's been a lot of social media, a lot of stories, a lot of information that's been put out there to make sure people understand, like the house, the Habitat House being moved downtown. Click and click one more time again. You know, I think that with media coverage from Omaha and World Herald and the television stations, I think we've seen more coverage of Council Bluffs, maybe with a little tinge of, gee, I wish we were doing so well in all of our metro region. I've been really happy with the kind of stories that we're getting out there. So people are beginning to understand what we already know, which is this is the right place to live. Okay, so then it's the bottom line, right? Have we actually delivered on those priorities? So if you remember, it's housing for all, education with purpose, and recreation for well-being. What have we done to move those forward? So starting with housing for all, there's a lot of information up there. It's tiny type, but there's a lot that we have started doing. And it all started with collaboration, with bringing the piece of people together who both put roofs over heads, not just the nonprofits, but also developers and bankers and real estate brokers. And then also convening, convening the people who provide services to those people who struggle a little bit more with getting a roof over their head. For the Council Bluffs Housing Coalition, David is on that, lots of other nonprofits and for-profit entities who help us decide what is it that we can collectively do to reap, to address that housing need across the whole spectrum, from people who don't have a roof to people who just can't find a house, if, if they could buy it, if they could find it, but they can't find it. For the city, we committed $4 million to create 1,300 housing units. And so far, they have made some grants, developed a toolkit, updated the website, and we are funding a dedicated expert to help them keep that moving forward. We supported Hillside Estates, completed some buildings here. We addressed dilapidated housing. You saw that throughout the southwest Iowa with one of the grants we made this time. We also do that for Potawatomi County. For at-risk residents, financial support for owners to make sure if they're going to lease to a tenant who doesn't have a good background, that the owner has some confidence that they will get paid and they won't be left hanging, you know, with a debt that can't be paid. The same thing that applies to our eviction diversion program, addressing both the tenant and the owner so that it's a fair relationship and nobody's left taking all the risk. And then for the unhoused, expanding our permanent supportive housing for people who have the capacity to live under a roof, but, and we don't want them in a shelter very long. That's not the best way to address those kinds of needs. Rapid rehousing of those who are unhoused. And collaboration, a lot of collaboration among the agencies that are dealing with homeless and near homeless, including the Council Bluffs Police Department and Council Bluffs Fire Department, who go out oftentimes on calls that they are not, that are not part of their usual duties. Now they'll have a navigator who can help figure out if somebody needs some help, but it's not what the police or fire can provide, somebody will be there to help. Moving on to education, we talked a little bit about this. Addressing from preschool, so people who are already in the workforce, training and skills for anybody who wants it. So with preschool, we have been funding access to full-day preschool in all of Potawatomi County for 18 years. And the most recent report from the Department of Education labeled Potawatomi County as the highest-ranked county in the state of Iowa for kindergarten readiness. Now, if you think about the counties and the communities we are competing with in terms of demographics, where Potawatomi County to be the most kindergarten-ready across the state is remarkable. And I think a lot of that has to do with the kind of long-term effort and the quality education that's being provided across Potawatomi County. As we talked a little bit about before in high school, you know, what we've done in preschool to support that, we want to see our programs at high school put Potawatomi County at the top of the list in Iowa again, for being able to prepare students to go out into the world and do what they want in order to be successful, regardless of what that might be. We also support Iowa Western throughout the county to make sure that students of all ages who want to go into secondary education have access to that. And then even after somebody is hired, Paula Hazelwood and her team at Advanced Southwest Iowa are doing an amazing job of bringing, bringing new jobs to Potawatomi County. They, those companies need workers and sometimes those workers need new skills. And so by working with the Chamber and Iowa Western to reskill and upskill, we can make sure that people who live here can also work here. And even providing entrepreneurial support through the Kitchen Council and financial support for artists, it's kind of across the board. So the last one is recreation for well-being. I don't need to tell all of you how well the county is doing on providing recreation for well-being, with Crescent Ski Hills having been declared the number one tourist attraction in the state. Potawatomi County is getting noticed by the state of Iowa and it's about time. We have been supporting Council Bluffs First Avenue, of course, the Wabash Trace from Council Bluffs down to Shenandoah, Hitchcock, Mount Crescent, Green Hills is one of the areas we just talked about, Scott. Parks and playgrounds that are fully accessible, murals across southwest Iowa, and then events as well, including, as I mentioned earlier, those free and reduced tickets to attractions throughout the metro area for schoolkids throughout Potawatomi County. That's how we believe that those are the things that we have done in order to really focus on addressing what the community told us was successful, what would be part of a successful community, for building a place where families love to live and businesses thrive. So we want to report that out to the community. I wanted to share that with you and tell you what we have been doing, how we view our role and how we've kind of changed some of our processes in order to do that. And then, as I said, on September 18th, we are scheduling, keep an eye out for an invitation, this report and then a conversation probably about housing and whether we're doing the right things or whether we need to adjust, so that we can keep that engagement that we started with Imagine Hour a couple of years ago. Questions, comments?
I went to some of those Imagine Hours. I really thought that was neat. Really, really thought what you'd done was very good because it needed a little tweak. And what you done, I really appreciate that, so, thank you. Good job.
Good, thank you.
Brenda, there's, there's a lot of education possibilities out there. I'm talking charter schools, I'm talking, you know, St. Albert's, that kind of thing, homeschooling. Your education efforts, are they broad-based or just, are you just focusing on the public schools?
We don't do private. Our requirements as a 501(c)(3) are pretty specific, and so we don't do private schools. We try to make sure that our funds are used as broadly as possible to benefit the community as a whole, but we currently don't do that.
Brenda, I want to thank you and Iowa West for your immediate response to the tornadoes from April 26th. Yours was one of the first phone calls I got as far as what do we need, what do you need, how can we help? And that just speaks volumes. And I think Doug can probably attest to that too, what the need is and how you've been responsive and the efforts with McClure.
I hope that I can come back to you in the next few months with some really positive news about, about Mendon. We knew that there would be emergency spot, response. People know how to do that. There's a whole system built for emergency response. And then everybody goes home and you have a town that doesn't know how to recover. So we committed from the outset to say, we're going to be here when everybody else goes home. And that really has, has worked so far. We have a very close relationship with Advanced Southwest Iowa, very close relationship with Iowa Economic Development, and we're creating a structure in Mendon. Essentially, we are helping to fund the consultant. We secured funding from United Way as well to fund the consultant that will allow Mendon to secure the state and federal dollars that otherwise they just don't have the capacity to get those dollars that are available. So use our money to get more, is my motto.
You know, the, the councils and the mayors are just citizens of this and they're not a full-time deal. And when something like that happens, it overwhelms them. We've had a flood out in Crescent. That just overwhelmed us, but we shuffled through it, we made it, but I can't imagine what Mendon has gone through. I talked to Kevin quite a bit.
And we also did provide $10,000 to every volunteer fire department in Potawatomi County that responded, either to Mendon or to Crescent. We just wrote them a check. If they responded, we wrote them a check.
Thank you. That was neat. Iowa West.
Intentional to the community needs. I like it.
Good, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you so much for coming in.
Brenda, thanks.
Hopefully we won't have any more disasters.
I hope no more disasters. I'm with you on that.
We're about sick of floods in Crescent.
Yes.
Three, last, 10, 12 years, 13 years, so, okay.
All right. Next up, Peggy Becker, Administrator, Veterans Services. We have two commissioners to swear in this morning, Jim Murray and David Hazelwood. So if you'd like to come forward, gentlemen, I have Supervisor Shay and who's going.
Let's do one at a time. You've got Dave.
I got David.
Okay, David, if you'll come up first.
Sure. Come on over here. I'm just wondering, what we're doing again?
You what?
Nothing.
Raise your right hand. I, state your name.
I, David Hazelwood.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
Do solemnly swear support the Constitution, the United States, and the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties as Commissioner of the Veterans Services.
Discharge all services as the veteran service.
According to the best of my ability as defined in Iowa Code 35B.
To the best of my ability by the Iowa Code 35B.
Thanks, David. Thanks for serving. Really appreciate it. Okay. You'll sign that?
All right.
Come on up.
Next, we have Jim Murray.
Okay, raise your right hand, sir. And repeat after me, okay? I, state your name.
James Murray.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
As a Commissioner of Veterans Services.
As a Commissioner of Veterans Services.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And as defined in Iowa Code 35B.
As defined in Iowa Code 35B.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I'll sign this.
Thanks, sir. She gets a hug.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for serving.
Thank you very much. I'm going to put that book upon you soon.
Okay.
I look forward to it. Sign this.
That's David's signature.
Yeah. David, you got to sign this. Hold on.
I signed the wrong place.
Hold on, I don't think you do.
Let's print another one. Yeah, let's print another.
Yeah.
You need to sign this once they do the changing seats.
Okay.
I'll do that. Right up here.
Yes.
Up to here.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, Jeanette's working on it. Yeah, we'll have it ready here in a second. Okay, in the essence of time, we're going to move on here to discussion and our decision on disaster recovery response. And we have Doug and Dave with us this morning.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
We'll just hit down the list today. So a lot of, a lot of things in motion right now, as some of the declarations are getting processed finally through FEMA headquarters in the White House. As far as the original April 26th events with the tornadoes, currently we are now authorized under that presidential federal declaration, FEMA individual assistance for homeowner and business, public assistance for government entities now. So that is good news, especially on a lot of things that, you know, we're trying to cross-pollinate, you know, or find better funding streams for some of Mendon's projects that, that come with a little less red tape. And then, you know, kind of take something like the public assistance program and try and grab some low-hanging fruit with that, make it easier on everybody. Small Business Administration is still active for that one, as well as Iowa Disaster Case Management. We do, we are now authorized for, on that tornado event, the, the new Iowa Disaster Recovery Temporary Housing Program, which runs and corresponds with FEMA's housing mission or the program, it's two sides of their housing programs called TSA and NCS. And basically, at the end of the day, TSA is more temporary hotel type of stuff, you know, that's authorized and has been available since, since we got the initial declaration. But that turns on kind of their, their more robust NCS program, which is kind of like, you know, either the campers or manufactured home or something like that, you know, depending on what the needs actually are. We're not seeing a whole lot of folks sign up for that, but as we're getting some of the ongoing and long-term needs surveys back from people that have been impacted by all three disasters, we're, we're still seeing a good number of folks that just haven't taken advantage of signing up for FEMA. And as we move forward, especially once we get authorized under the flood stuff or, or up in the Crescent area where there are also, could potentially be some housing needs there, we really need to get people to sign up for that because it is a prerequisite to the state program that you have registered with FEMA. And so.
Signing up, even after this period of time, Doug?
Yeah, yeah.
I, I saw on the news today, they're going to have FEMA out at Mendon again, and I just, I kept thinking, why wouldn't they sign up?
They were supposed to be, they were supposed to be out there a week from today, but one of the other counties, based on their numbers and kind of their needs that they've looked at, are like, we're done. You know, they, they've had the opportunity, so they kind of gave up their week, which was this week. So we worked with them and snagged them so we could have them back up in Mendon for a solid two weeks. Because we, if we still have folks, and, and we've got a couple that have submitted surveys that have identified potential housing needs as they move forward with their insurance companies and things like that, but they're not signed up for FEMA. So, so we need to make a big push so they're, they have access to the state program, which is a little less cumbersome than the FEMA program. And the kind of idea is if it's some short-term, you know, the hotel thing would probably be best, at least, you know, real, real temporary, but we're kind of beyond that point with that particular disaster. Now we're looking at what are we going to do to make sure our kids are back in school in the same district and we're not traveling around forever? You know, this program can provide some opportunity, right? We can, we can drop a camper in their driveway. You know, if it's going to be like long-term through the winter kind of a deal, then we can look at some manufactured home type of arrangements. And this is kind of a turnkey deal too. We saw this in, in Winterset recently, you know, we had a, we had a statewide coordination meeting on this program yesterday. And some of the things they're seeing is people aren't signing up for it, even though they're already eligible based on their status of declaration, because they're like, well, that'd be great and we need it, but I don't even have electricity, I can't get to water, everything's gone, everything's shit on. And so what we want to make sure that we communicate to our folks is, if that's your case, sign up anyway because it's turnkey, right? They'll come in and drop a temporary box. They'll figure out a deal, how to hook whatever type of housing unit up, you know, for, you know, to deal with sewage and things like that and water. So, but the first step is get over that hump, right? And I think the, part of the problem. And I think the part of the problem is there's just too much word of mouth of, hey, I got denied. Which you, which nine times out of ten went back to they're, they're eligible. They just, you know, the, the delays, the problems we've seen with the insurance companies, that a lot of cases, that's not settled with people yet. And, and so until they have that, they can't really move forward in the federal program because of those requirements of duplication benefits and, and all this good stuff. But there's a lot of, you know, at least for that initial, there's also a lot of other things going, going on that are being worked, you know, between I have finance authority and EDA, a county, county housing program that MAPPA runs that's funded through IFA and, and some of the other good things that are going with, with other local partners. So really, August twenty-fourth is probably going to be the, the the sign up for FEMA deadline at this point for that first disaster. One, one request for extensions already been submitted. So we're, we're gonna start, I'll, I'll be working with, with Craig a little bit to make a pretty hard pull. Because we want to make sure that people have access to that. We're also looking, we're also looking at, at some type of community outreach event. Working with a couple of people to maybe do something to do something that will, that will draw in people that have been impacted, you know, and I'm leaning away from a town hall type of meeting kind of scenario, right? Those can go really good. They can go really bad. People are frustrated with the federal process and with this, and, and we want to have an event that ends in results and not, you, you know, we can still accomplish and answer questions without stuffing people into a high school auditorium and, you know, so we're looking at some, some different unique ways to present the opportunity to get that out, but then also open that up to other folks out there in the community that have, have other, other resources for folks, you know, between some of the different relief funds, you know, for, for Crescent. Once they get that lined out and, and for Minden specific. Some of those folks can be there too, to help get people signed up for different programs. And hopefully we can find a way to do that to kind of, you know, pull, pulls down some guards, dispel some rumors and we get people in before it's too late.
How's the response code down at the Lakewood Center?
Oh, good, good. I don't have a fresh copy. Well, on two fronts. It, it's been going well. They, they've kept coming back, so they're, they're seeing people, right? Not, not in huge numbers, but not in zeros either. So I, I think we're getting to the point, especially when you consider the flood event that I'll get to here in a second, that, that will probably transition away from continuous mobile FEMA and SBA signup kind of operation. Because again, they're also considering, FEMA's considering their resources as well. You know, there, there's a lot of folks that, that still aren't included in the, the flood disaster period declaration yet when that happens. And, and it's likely to happen here within the next week or so. At least that's what I'm hoping. But you've heard me say that for several months on the first disaster. But, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna need to surge personnel to keep operating here while they're prepping and, and dealing with things that'll be ramping up here during hurricane season as well. And those mobile units are, are used a lot in those, those type of, those type of disasters. So we'll probably be transitioning to a more permanent, you know, one, one stop kind of a place for the federal resources. And it'll, it'll be challenging because there's no real good place to put it when you consider everybody that's been impacted by all three disasters. So they'll continue to serve until the deadline, the, the tornado event from April, but then also take in folks from the flooding event and some of the other storms that were in between in that incident period anyway. But the big thing is we need to make a push on that August twenty-fourth. You are correct, a mobile recovery center did stand up today in Minden and will be there through August third. And then after that, hopefully around, you know, like August fifth, midday, be opening up a, a fixed facility site somewhere here in the county where we stay for the entire month of August. They're also planning on, on September, but we might have to find a different location at that point. On the second event, hail windstorms May twenty-first through the end of May, which is disaster forty-seven eighty-four. Right now, we have federal public assistance. There will be no federal individual assistance for that incident. We just didn't have the, the individual impacts. However, we, we still have the Iowa Disaster Case Management open on that one, as well as the Iowa Individual Assistance Grant Program. And we do have a request for a rural Small Business Administration disaster declaration for that event pending. Right now, they're, they're collecting some additional data from a few counties before they send that request up. And that'll just kind of open up the ESBA stuff kind of more on the rural side since we don't have an individual assistance. On the public sector side for that event, I, I want to have in jurisdictional requests for public assistance by August eighteenth. That's, that's right now set as the deadline to have that federal paperwork filed to get our departments included to be able to be reimbursed under that disaster. And if you remember, we've got, we've got some damages out there, county infrastructure, but, but most significant is probably, that was the, the start of damages to a lot of our, or at least to a few of our drainage and levee districts ahead of the flooding event.
I had some of them call me and ask if this, this declaration, declaration will allow them funding to repair the levees.
Yeah, we've reached out several times and, and we've also communicated to their engineers and they're not turning in their stuff. We keep sending them information, so if you get phone calls from these levee districts as individual board members, I'd appreciate you passing on the message that they need to get us called so we can get it.
They need to be filed on the eighteenth.
There's a couple, well, yes, but the following disaster covered up all the damages from that. So how, how we say what was damaged, when and to what extent is gonna get a little tricky. So it may be the decision through negotiation with state and federal officials that we all roll it under one disaster or we try and separate it out. There's gonna be absolutely no way to document or really prove anything. We do have some documentation on the damages that occurred May twenty-first through thirty-first from at least a couple of the districts, but not everybody took damages. I think Pigeon Creek was okay on that event. And, and I, I might be getting it wrong.
They go outs.
I know Finsler H and P had some damages for sure, but, and Nobles had some from that event, I believe.
Josh should've got to that, didn't he?
We, we've got, we've got that stuff. We've got that stuff. We just, we just needed to keep communicating. But I know they've all been busy with some farm stuff and too, but the engagement there could certainly step up.
Okay.
A bit. Moving on to June sixteenth, which is the start period for the floods, which, you know, our, our impact started maybe somewhere around the twenty-fourth, twenty-sixth. Our request for individual assistance for property owners and renters is currently at FEMA Region Seven down in Kansas City being processed. Once it, it cuts the mustard there, they'll send it up to FEMA headquarters and then eventually it'll get to the White House. We're clustered in as an add-on with a few other counties for that event. So that one, hopefully, we'll, we'll hear back something. They've been turning these around for the floods fairly quickly. So, so I would imagine somewhere between the next, you know, seven, twelve days, hopefully we'll have something. I think it went to region last Thursday, so we should be hearing something fairly soon with that one. We're waiting to get additional information from local jurisdictions and agencies on damages, response cost from the flood event. Right now, once we have that, schedule a joint damage assessment with FEMA and Small Business Administration, the State of Iowa, and validate those damages, start moving forward with that public assistance request process. In the interim, we do have the Iowa Individual Assistance Grant Program available to those impacted, as well as the Iowa Disaster Case Management Program. And with the IAPA pending, technically, the Disaster Recovery Temporary Housing Program is not activated yet for that particular disaster, but I know that we've got one person in this county that's signed up for that program, as I understand it, they were impacted by the flood. So we'll be kind of working that with the vendor that the, the state hired to manage that program. So far, of course, you're aware of that survey because of all three events and the multiple declarations and everything else, trying to keep things straight. We've got a survey out there for all the local jurisdictions and departments within those jurisdictions. On the county front, those we've heard of so far that have told us one way or another that they're in or they're out free to the disaster. The Sheriff's Office has responded. Secondary Roads has, the County Recorder's Office has responded. They don't have anything for any of the disasters, as well as Community Services, GIS has responded. I know they've got some support costs from the first disaster. Conservation has responded. And just as of note, the engineer for all of our drainage and levee districts has completed that survey as well. So, so they're all in. Some, some have two, some are impacted by just one, but we've got that all straight. We'll be taking those surveys. You'll probably be seeing some more information out late this afternoon. It's been in the daily operations brief this week. The surveys are gonna remain open until close of business this Friday. So you'll see some information come out to your department heads and to the other jurisdictions that's like, we gotta move on, so let us know who's who in the suit. And, and if your answer is no, I don't have anything from this disaster, they've been advised to kind of make sure that they've vetted that through the appropriate chain of command if that's the case. On the ongoing long-term needs survey that we put out, we've had thirty-nine folks respond to that so far. And we're collecting some information on needs with them. There's been a few so far, but getting kind of people pointed in the right direction has been good. Just the other day, we've got it worked out because the state has worked with all the county reporters' offices on essential documents, birth certificates, those kind of things. You know, and I've already talked to our county recorder, says, yep, just have them get ahold of us so we can direct those people right there. They'll get them the documents that they need under the, the current state guidance for that. Out of the thirty-nine that have responded, there have been three that said, we don't want you to share any of our information, so we really can't do anything with it. So if they don't want us to release the information, the survey just kind of ends. They can go back in and redo it if they want to, if they change their mind. But again, if we can't share the data with the people that have the resources, there's really not much we can do. And, and quite a few of those looking through the initial data coming in, like I mentioned before, several of them have identified certain needs but haven't signed up for FEMA or, or even any local programs at this point. So they've just kind of worked with their insurance company and kind of struggling through that. So whether they're waiting till they hear from that, because that's what they've been told, I don't know. So, but again, I think we'll, we'll certainly make some different pushes in the coming day to get folks to hopefully get over that hump and get signed up, at least so they don't miss out on, on something they might need. We will be getting together some of the folks that do have existing local programs and things like that to start parsing out these needs and say, okay, who can handle this? Who can do this, do this, and get the right resource in contact with the right people. Back to the flood real quick, a decision the board is gonna have to come up with here fairly soon. So I'd say maybe have some internal discussions and maybe have, have a, at least some guidance on which way you want to go by next week's meeting. Is for the flood specific, the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, which will bring along with it flood, damaged flood property acquisitions, like you're familiar with from twenty-eleven and twenty-nineteen, nineteen ninety-three, and all these other bigger floods that we've had. So, you know, for those that haven't been involved in that process, at the end of the day, it's a process through FEMA mitigation grant where private properties can be acquired for buyout, if you will, from a private property owner. Essentially, it becomes green space and we get people out of the flood, the floodway out of the flood zone. So it's not a property that's impacted residentially anymore in the future, under good theory.
Most of those property owners have been offered at least twice.
Oh, certainly, certainly.
And I thought last time they said that that was the end of that. So this is a whole new program yet again?
It is. It is. It is. And, and if the board someday would like my opinion on it, I'd be happy to render it. However, at the end of the day, you need to decide if you want to participate or not. Likely, if, if you do, then I would submit the notice of interest on, on behalf of the county into the system. And likely, your project management for that will go to your floodplain manager, which is in your, your planning and development department, so.
I'm wondering if there are people that want to be bought out at this time.
You know.
There's not many left down there, correct?
No, there's not. We probably up in that area probably have somewhere around that thirty-five mark that still have residential properties that are occupied, at least based on, you know, information that the Sheriff's Office brought back on validations of, you know, when we, we put out evacuation information and those kind of things. So there, there are residential properties up there. It will be a program that you can tap into. It's your decision whether you participate in it or not. We've done it a lot. The local people end up being the, the bad guys because valuations are done by an independent consulting company that you have to go off of and, you know, it's, it's never what everybody wants. And, and, and people can change their minds up to the very last minute. That's not that big of a deal. But it's, I, I'd encourage you, if, if you want to entertain looking at it, that you do a deep dive into what parcels we have up there that, that have occupied structures and, and if the juice is worth the squeeze. Compared to all the offerings that we've had up in, in that particular area over the past decade, you know, is it, is, is the cost or what we're going to gain in mitigation worth it? So that, that'll be something you'll have to determine. So with that, we'll continue on with what we're doing. And maybe if, if, if you want to discuss that further, maybe I'll, we'll just leave this on, on the schedule for next week. Maybe we can have that discussion before we kind of move to a different tempo here. Just because I know we'll need to get the word in here fairly soon on that. Outside of that, the rest of the week, we'll continue to work with folks, get data in, work these processes. If you try and get ahold of us, we're gonna be kind of in and out quite a bit this week. We've got some exercise planning meetings this afternoon, Wednesday for at least half a day. Doing a joint exercise with Black Hills Energy, Northern Natural Gas, some infrastructure partners. I know we'll be participating with Minden in, in some committee stuff on the selection of, of of their disaster recovery coordinator, community planner. And we'll also be supporting the Summer Fest celebration Friday here in the city, so.
Where's that at?
Down at Tom Hanifin Park.
Oh, okay.
Friday night.
The lawn will be roped off.
Okay. Because it was a mess last I saw it, so.
Yeah, it is. Everything's gonna happen up on the east side. They, they've figured out how they can kind of arrange the stuff that's going on and the little drone light show still happen down on the bottom.
Okay.
And so we're gonna go.
So the drainage districts, you need to hear from, do you need to hear from the trustees or their engineer?
I, I, really, at the end of the day, the trustees won't have the information because the engineer's doing the work. We just need to make sure that they're communicating that stuff to us because paperwork's gonna start. because the paperwork's gonna start with us, no matter what they do.
Good.
Right? And, and we're going to be fastly approaching a, a timeframe here that FEMA is like, okay, these are the deadlines, we have no more extensions. Life safety stuff is over across the state, right? Uh, you know, we get lucky because we can get some additional time because they're still working some like immediate needs, critical issues in other flooded areas of the state. And, uh, but, but that's gonna be short-lived. And they're gonna say, these are the hard fast deadlines. We need to make sure we have the right information to the right people at the right time, uh, so nobody gets missed out.
They just have to start the process, correct?
Yes.
And then, then they got time.
Yep. And, and I get it. It, it's, it's been a long, it's been a long, rough year for everybody. Uh, and it's not gonna be over anytime soon, right? The, you know, the, the emergency response stuff, I, I know this sounds weird, is, is the easier of disaster scenarios, right? Cause you got a lot of good departments, a lot of good people that, that help and volunteers and, and all kinds of things. And they, they know how to do that stuff. And it's when you get into the, okay, it's been a couple of months now and you talk about individual, uh, individuals recovery and the government infrastructure recovery. It's a long, the, right? We, we've still got projects pending from the twenty-nineteen floods.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, you know, so I, it, it just is, hasn't been that long ago. We just closed out the federal disaster from the two thousand eight floods across the state. So, you know, it's, it, it's one of those things. And again, the challenge is, we're gonna have three different public assistance declarations, all operating concurrently, as well as two individual assistance programs operating concurrently. So, uh, the opportunity for something to slip through the cracks is high and, and we just wanna prevent that, so. There's gonna be a lot of, there's going to be a lot of emails that come out of our office with, with, uh, some, we need you to do this now kind of stuff and, and just, just understand the kind of mentality it's coming from. If we're not hearing from certain folks, uh, we'll, we'll get a little more money if need be because we just don't want anything missed. Everybody spent a ton of money on disaster response cleanups and recovery this year and, and, uh, we need to take advantage of, of the reimbursements that are out there.
So Doug, the original declaration from April twenty-sixth, the ninety days, well, we're going to allow it to lapse.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's fine. We're not, you, you know, we don't have anything crazy that state assets are necessarily needed. You know, we've got some ongoing things that, that are still being used as mutual aid within the system, right? I've got, we've got the, the state's temporary, uh, water plant still in Mendon. I've got, uh, a couple of state generators that are still up there providing emergency backup to some of their systems. You know, so those, those things will remain in place and, but we don't need a declaration at the city or county level for those things right now. Uh, and I know that, that the state declaration for June sixteen moving forward was just extended, I think, yesterday by the governor. So we're, we're still good on that. We don't need to renew anything to be.
I heard her say this morning.
Partakers.
August seventeen.
Uh, ye, 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 to, 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 on that disaster?
Well, I don't know what disaster she was talking about.
Yeah.
August seventeen.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that, that would, would, would be from the flood event. Especially since it started June six, June, June sixteen. So that would have taken us to, you know, a few days ago, or they probably had the paperwork and just released the stuff yesterday, right? So that'll carries through another thirty days, essentially. So, so, yeah, we're, we're good on that front, uh, either at the municipal or county level across the, across the county, so.
What was the deadline for the drainage districts to get any information? For their engineer?
Um, they, most of them don't, some of them have stuff for the May twenty-first event. I need to have their paperwork into FEMA and state by August eighteen. And we have data on that. It just need, they just need to put it in the system for me. Um, which, you know, we had one of the, uh, the, the gentleman from the, from the engineering firm in, in our meeting where we discussed that stuff with departments.
So there was the, the engineer's aware.
They're aware, they're aware. They'll just be part of the chain with everybody else on getting reminders. Uh, that will probably be, be more than we need, but we're gonna make sure. Uh, so outside of that, for the individuals, at least for the original disaster, the August twenty-fourth is kind of their timeframe to get signed up by FEMA. And on the flood side, everything's kind of just open. So outside of that, any questions?
Yeah, just real quick, Doug, have you identified any properties that were flooded in, in the flood event?
Uh, yeah, yeah, we had, uh, gosh, I should have brought the.
You have addresses for those?
Yes.
Is GIS, Matt?
Has, uh, Matt, have you provided those to Matt?
Yes. We, we provided, we provided our damage assessments that we did, uh, for the FEMA declaration process. Once we finished those up, we, uh, I downloaded that, that information and I sent it to, uh, planning and I also sent it to the assessor's office.
Well, we can bring Matt in and have a conversation about that, but this is more than a one-week discussion. It's gonna take a while. Um, we need to know the participation of FEMA, we need to know the participation of the state because this board can't afford, nor I, do I think it's fair for us to buy someone's property that's been flooded two or three times. The, uh, do any of those properties have flood insurance?
Only, only if they've got a mortgage on it and it's required by the.
See, there's a lot of stuff that needs to happen before. So when you mentioned next week.
Well, this was.
Boards are not gonna be ready next week.
This is whether you want to entertain participating or not, not that you're gonna buy anything at all, right? But you're not gonna have the information, I think, that you're thinking of from the state or the feds about their participation or dollars. The program is gonna be open under HMGP.
Well, does that mean that the feds and the state are involved, are participating?
Well, yeah, they have to. It's their program.
No, I'm talking about in the hazard mitigation or the buyout of those properties.
Yeah.
What, at what percentage?
They're, they're grant, right? It's, it's the same cost shares, everything.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five, twenty-five, but we're an enhanced planning state and county, so the state will pick up ten percent. So seventy-five fed, ten state, fifteen.
Fifteen, what was last time?
Yeah, that's what, that's what it is every time.
Well, and we've got CBG money to cover your fifteen.
Sure, so get it.
Yeah, there's, there's that, there's, you know, there's, there's, you know, it, in, in the past, there's, there's been money for the cost sharing through CBG that, you know, uh, depending on the area that was impacted and their requirements, there's, you know, we use a lot of the flood recovery flood, uh, fund. Uh, you know, down south, they use that for residential's. I think there was some limited use in council. We lost them nineteen for that. Uh, at least there was a, a request that went in.
So maybe we could get, get with, uh, Matt and pass, see when they'd be ready to present that information to us.
Okay, start basic study session.
Yeah, I mean, I could talk to Matt.
In the survey, is anybody requested being bought out?
No, no, we, we haven't even.
Most of those people that are left down there, we had offered it twice.
I, I, I'm not, you know, with what we have, risk-wise, um, when we talk emergency operations anyway, right? And, and that's my focus. It's gonna flood, we know it's coming. What are the risks and how do we respond to it? We don't have a highly concentrated area of residential properties where if they don't evacuate, we've got a significant search and rescue mission that has to happen that would overwhelm our departments, right? With, with the housing we have up there, what we did this time is appropriate, it's timely, and it worked. Uh, and, uh, and we had no issues. We need one person right before crest, uh, when there was a problem with a levy, uh, that was still staying at their house. It was reported in by that levy district. And, uh, and we sent a deputy up there to advise him, it's gonna get real, you should probably get moving. The guy had already made the decision to take off because he saw what was coming and, and they did. So, um, I, I don't know if buyouts make sense for us at this point. I, you, at the end of the day, the county owns green space that you have to maintain forever. And, and you have, you know, another residential property off the tax laws. So I, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of with you on it. Just, we've had a lot of these over the past decade plus, uh, and, and multiple opportunities through, through different programs, funding. I know, I know which way I would vote, but I don't get a vote, so.
The, the flood areas, basically, how much of that is, was crop land? Do you have any idea was it crops lost?
Most of it.
Most of it, cause I knew, I had a friend of mine that had, had a, a farm acreage down close to Nebraska City. Uh, and, uh, he, he basically, uh, uh, he, he was telling me that there's a, was a federal program involved about flooding because those, those areas flood periodically. But he was able to accept the, what, what the, the government was offering him as payments because he figured he could farm it seven out of ten years, you know? Three out of the ten years would be flooded. And so it's, it's always a, a financial.
Hmm, uh, that, that, yeah, that's.
And there's, there's people that are still living there, up in that area.
River, river.
That's how they forget it.
River bottom ground for agriculture is high-risk, higher reward. It's great land, great yields, and you have a, a great year. And then every once in a while floods and not getting anything out of the ground.
That's right.
And you got a mess to clean up, but.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
Okay, thank you.
Hang on, Janet Limerick, Director, Human Resources, and Jeff Franco, Executive Director, Conservation. Discussion and/or decision on pay range for environmental education intern position.
Morning.
Morning.
Um, the, this position is one of those ones that, um, has, it's not part of our other pay ranges. And so this position is today thirteen dollars to fifteen dollars an hour. We have an employee, he's coming back.
Good.
Second year with us. So this is one of those positions, a seasonal temporary position that employees come back. Um, and we'd like to be able to offer him more, but what we'd like to offer him is outside of our thirteen to fifteen dollar an hour range. So we'd like to move the range to thirteen to sixteen dollars. That way we can accommodate giving him a dollar increase, which is what we typically do when employees, uh, come back to create that range. And then we're, so we're not, we're gonna keep it thirteen to sixteen. And then the second step on your agenda is then approving him in that pay.
Seasonal temporary, what season is this? I mean, if it's summer, it's almost over.
It's true. There's not much, uh, this, this is a bit of just a reward for good work done. We like to reward interns every so often with, with a dollar increase if they deserve it. So this will be for the remainder of the season through the middle of August.
Want to give him a dollar for an hour raise for good work done.
Correct.
For merit pay?
Uh, this, yeah, we do that for our interns periodically.
Conservation has done this multiple times in the past. This is typically how they, um, handle their pay increases, if that's what you want to call them, for the seasonal temporary positions, because they don't receive the same pay increases that everyone else gets on July first. And so when they have someone that has been with us for a while and continues to come back to us, um, yes, this has been approved multiple times in the past couple of years for these.
Two pay periods.
Pretty, yeah.
Make that motion.
I'll say it.
Okay.
And so that motion is to change the pay, the pay.
Thirteen to sixteen.
Thank you.
Are they, it's had a full-time position during the week?
Forty hours.
Forty, okay.
We have a motion by Bell, the second by Jorgensen, to approve the pay range for the environmental education intern position to be thirteen to sixteen dollars per hour. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion just carried. And then we have Janet Limerick, Director, Human Resources, and Jeff Franco, Executive Director, Conservation. Discussion and/or decision on pay for environmental education intern.
And this is just simply taking that individual, moving them to that sixteen dollars?
So this shows of.
Go, go down.
Go down.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve?
I'll say it.
The effective date's seven thirteen, so they've already been moved.
No, they, they haven't been moved yet because that's the pay period we're in right now.
Get these on time, Janet.
This one is just conversations with conservation. We've had, conservation has had a lot going on, HR's had a lot going on. It's on time. It's in the pay period. If you decided against it, then they still keep their pay that they're at now.
Well, the effective date's seven thirteen.
That's what we're asking for.
Today's seven twenty-two.
Correct, but we haven't been paid for that, seven thirteen? That's in the pay period we're in right now. There's no back pay that has to be recalculated by payroll. If you, if, if the board says no, then we stay where we're at now.
So we're making these effective by the pay period instead of the date?
Yes, because that way, the start of the pay period, that way payroll doesn't have to hand calculate half of a pay period at one date and half of a pay period at another date. Tyler does not accommodate two pay rates during a pay period that has to be hand calculated by payroll. So when these decisions come in at this time, we do like to start at the beginning of a pay period so that Tyler can accommodate, and there's no hand calculation that has to be done. That leads to human error.
Should have been brought to us. You. Should have been brought to us.
That would be on us. The request didn't come in until the first part of July.
Right, and a motion by Shay, the second by Jorgensen, to approve the pay for the environmental education intern at sixteen dollars per hour. Discussion?
Well, the only thing is Tyler's very efficient.
We make it work. We make it work.
It's terrible.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion just carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Janet Limerick, Director, Human Resources, and David Baer, Chief Information Officer, Information Technology. Discussion and/or decision on System Administrator One and System Administrator Two job descriptions.
Do you mind if I, David Baer?
I could do that.
That's okay.
That's okay. It's a very difficult. I didn't have it, you know, it's only been twenty years.
When I said it, I was like, I think I just, is that wrong?
That's okay.
What we're asking, uh, for you today is the creation of a System Administrator One and a System Administrator Two. These are new positions that we'd like added to the IT department. Uh, David, you wanna jump in?
Sure. So these two positions are, um, right now in IT, we have help desk primarily and network people. And so we have kind of two halves. Help desk is great at answering immediate requests. Network is great at handling the network that's kind of behind the scenes. What we're not great at is the, um, I would say the care and feeding of systems and software. And we'd like to be better at that and, and that, that's why we'd like to create these two positions, a one and a two, uh, to focus on software and being a liaison between the customer, our employees and the vendors. Uh, look for efficiencies and workflows, um, updates, security, permissions, those kinds of things. The software, we do those things now, but we just, we'd rather have a dedicated person, uh, that could be focusing on those kinds of things.
So you have existing employees that you would move into these positions or you could be hiring to fill these roles?
We would not be hiring to fill. We would be, uh, sliding someone over. It would just, so we would just move one person, even though these are two positions, or just do one person likely in the one role. And then, uh, over time, maybe as they, they do well, we would move them into the two, uh, promote them down the road. But we would just move one person over. We just, we would advertise internally, uh, to see who would want to take this position.
And you would not be looking to backfill? So if that person, when that person does move over, David's not looking to backfill, um, that other spot. So this is budget neutral.
Isn't this, yeah, up in grade?
It's the same.
Same grade?
Same, yep.
So how many qualifications or social functions, how many people you got already there that are qualified?
Sorry, there's, uh, there's a few people that, uh, would be great in this position.
You got four, you got five?
Um, I think, I don't know, they're probably all listening, so, uh, they're all great. They would all be great at this.
I forgot about that.
Yes, they are. Yes, they are.
Got about that, okay. Good.
With many people qualified, but um, by posting it internally, we'll see who's interested.
Okay, well, what I like to hear best about this is budget neutral.
We thought you would.
Yeah, there's no, no money here. It's just a new position that we slide someone over into.
I'll make that, I'll make that. I'll second that. Uh, no money now, David, or no money period?
Uh, this would be the same as if we had a network person at the one level and someday down the road, they would go to a two. So all our jobs have one, two and three. This one will be a one and a two. So down the road, yes, it could be more if they prove themselves, but that's true for all of our jobs.
And David usually does a really good job preparing for that and budgeting for that in advance, knowing that that person is getting ready to finish their certification and such. So David usually budgets for that.
Those four or five people that you mentioned, David, how many of them have the Iowa N C I C certification?
All of our staff have that. That's kind of, that's a requirement since we work on uh, nine to one sheriff jail systems. We need to be C G S certified.
That's our requirement or is that?
It's uh, no, it's a requirement, F B I requirement.
And this person, the who will they report to? They report to you directly or?
Anthony McCartney, our supervisor.
David, you got a good team over there.
Thank you.
They
I do have a good team.
They'll walk in there and then they're all accommodating and very knowledgeable.
Glad to hear it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Do you have any uh backlash from the crowd strike deal then?
We had a little tiny bit. The auditor's office is the only department that uses crowd strike in our county. Um, and that's a requirement, Secretary of State requires the election departments to use crowd striking. That's provided by the state. So they had about an hour or two of outage on Friday.
Was that all longer took them? Becky had a little uh, unfortunate, she had to get online for certain reasons.
Yeah, there, everyone, we, we went, there were about ten computers affected. And some were on within a few minutes and others took a few, a little bit longer.
I was pretty lucky then, wasn't I?
Yeah, yeah, we're good. We're happy that it didn't affect us.
You couldn't check into a hotel?
Right. Airlines were down.
Yeah.
Hospitals. Yep.
It was nuts.
Yep, half, more than five hundred companies use crowd strike. So two hundred and fifty companies, at least, are the big ones.
Did.
Did. Certainly there will be some uh fallout for that.
So we have a more motion by Jorgensen and a second by Shay to approve the job description for system admin one and the admin two. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Everybody, good job on that deal.
I will.
The computer is miserable. People are still stuck in airports.
In received and filed, we have the arbitrage rebate report. Mitch, I was just wondering, has the board, does the board need to approve the action to pay that?
No.
That's just a normal payment. For committee appointments and updates. Um, I talked, um, the seven one two initiative. They are having their final meeting at seven one two on Thursday morning and they are collapsing their charter into the C B chamber. And when I was at their last meeting, we went through the bylaws and there is no provision in the new bylaws for an ex officio member. And so I have, I consider our responsibilities as an ex officio for seven one two to be included at this time. I asked Chris if he would come into the board in September or October. Chris La Perla, who's the new executive director, would come in and give us an update on where seven one two and what their new mission and vision is and how the county can be a partner for them without having a seat at the table. So and um, I sent you all an email. I'd like to get a town hall meeting scheduled for out in the county for either August twelfth or fourteenth. I've heard from two of you that those dates will work. Um, August twelfth is a Monday, which coincides with a lot of city council meetings, so I was trying to stay away from Monday. And I think August fourteenth would probably be the best one. And coincidentally, it will be a week before that FEMA deadline that Doug was talking about, so we can have a final push out there to get in fact, we could even have signups there that night so that we could get that finished up. Um, I will reach out to Craig to contact all the department heads as far as sending the template out so that we can assemble material and each of the departments will be asked to present on what their current goals are for the next year. John Raspason especially with the five-year plan and what his roads departments are planning. If you've got other thoughts and ideas for subject discussion, um, please let me know. Um, and Tim and Scott, I'll let you check your calendars and let me know if you gotta come for the fourteenth. Okay.
Susan, do we have a regular meeting during that time or just the town hall?
I think just the town hall.
Okay, all right.
Um, I
Just was a question.
That, that is a good question. I've got a couple of things on the agenda for August. I'll have to look to see if maybe we could pull those out and actually have a meeting at the county.
A lot of those people would like to be able to attend just a regular meeting.
Just
It's, well, it was a question.
That is a good question.
They can, they, they don't have to physically attend to see the meeting.
I know, but a lot of people still like to.
Right.
Yeah. Brian, you were on vacation.
I was on vacation. I was unplugged.
Yeah.
And I liked it.
Report?
No. Felt good.
You have anything?
No.
Scott?
No.
All right.
Tomorrow.
All right, did we, did we have any public sign up for comments?
Thriving family.
No?
Doug, you didn't sign up?
No, thriving family.
Okay.
When you were on
Sean always does.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Still trying to get my arms wrapped around that one.
Well, it's combined with a bunch of other
Anyone in the public broadcast?
For the budget study session, I think we could stay on. All right, we are now moving to agenda item seven, a budget study session. And Mitch?
How long are you gonna talk, Mitch? I gotta get a whole moment.
Well, the memo's pretty good, so they can just read it and they can say, hey, we're done, but I'll, I can talk about it for a little bit.
No longer. Six, seven, eight, get it.
Thank you, Mitch.
Okay. Linda's here. Why don't we do that, Mitch? Why don't we move to the discussion on the Coldheart Levy District? In your packets, um, we've got a discussion and our decision to approve and authorize the board chair to sign amendment number four for this subaward agreement between the flood mitigation board and the Coldheart Levy District. And I've been doing lots of research. Thank you, Linda.
Oh, sorry.
Been at for helping to piece it all together and Scott's history this morning was very valuable. Um, for once and for all, but I'm completely in agreement that the Coldheart Levy District is one and the same with the C N R Levy District. Even though this is talking about amending or extending the dates for Coldheart, it's actually for the C N R District. Okay.
Yes, are we convening as trustees of so then we need to go out of the session, is that?
We can, we can if you want, or we can uh make sure the minutes reflect that. A lot of counties do. They will go from uh board issues to trustee issues back and then the clerk one is
Are we making any decisions?
Yeah.
And we have
I think I agree with Tim.
We, we should be in the
Well, we need a lot.
Yeah. So whatever Susan wants to do, we should, we should be uh
I, I think for legality reasons, I do think we need to adjourn.
What was that, Chris? It might be cleaner to go out of your regular board meeting and then go back in.
Just to turn the regular meeting.
If we're making no decisions.
We're not making any decisions. I don't
All right.
On the agenda.
So then we're
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion by Wickman and a second by Shay to adjourn the, the regular board of supervisors meeting that ended at eleven